Evening, everybody. We're going to start our school committee meeting, and we always start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Goodbye, everybody.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Father of the United States of America, and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. It's good to see a nice crowd here. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yep, there will be two. We'll add a job after court under reports. And we'll add a cost center adjustment for 2023-24 under old business.
All right. First thing is to consider the minutes from our last meeting.
They should be included in your packet. Borrowing any errors or omission, I would recommend the pre-legalized.
Motion.
Second, all in favor? And then, right now, we have an opportunity for public comments. So if there's anybody in the audience who has anything they want to share with us or comments on. You guys are coming.
You guys are coming, learn next.
Yeah. All right, seeing none, there's a chance at the end if you stay that long.
I'm going to advise you to.
But it sounds like we have a very special presentation tonight from the Harry Potter Club.
We do. So today, I went to a meeting in Augusta. And at these meetings with fellow principals, we're always asked to start with something positive. So my positive today was this particular club. So a few years ago, I think three now, we're working on three maybe?
We started when we were so fast.
Okay.
It wasn't five years, but it was a year after.
Year after. Ms. Larry and Mr. Terrio came to me wanting to start a club for Harry Potter. I don't think they quite knew how it was going to gel yet, but they knew they wanted to do something. So I taught to my group of fellow principals today about how this group of, these two teachers, bring this group together and the excitement. You know I'm all about the reading, writing, and math and all that kind of stuff. But this is just so, you see the faces of these kids when they get out of this club, excuse me, at the end of the day, whatever day they do it. And it's just so exciting. And the things they do around the school and reading tea leaves and all of a sudden dressed in the garb. And then we're going to go for a walk down the hall and you wait to see Mr. Terrio's room and how it is decorated. And he was told he had to clean because company was coming tonight. So it's ready for us. I'm sure he did. But the things that we do that go beyond the school day is just very, very exciting for us to see. And that was my positive. So we're going to go down the hall and see the Harry Potter Club. Do you want to share anything before we get down there?
Oh, just really quickly. So I, during Harry Potter Club, I put up some feelers to just see if anyone would like to come. And all of these students said, yes, I would love to come and present, which I think is really, really cool. I also put up a few fifth grade work projects because these are all fifth graders. So they pondered a little bit about what we can do in fifth grade as well on top of Harry Potter Club. And another cool thing about our Mr. T is that a couple of these students are in more than one of Mr. T's clubs. So he also runs the chess club and sci-fi and T and D. And I think Flynn, you're all of them, right? You're not in the top of the slide? He thought, he said that I think Flynn is in all of them. Well, we have a group that are in all of his clubs. And Gavin, you're in top of them, right?
Uh, I'm in three of them.
In three of them. So it's really cool that we've been able to kind of create that community where they all want to join so many clubs. So yeah, we're good to go down.
Oh, can I? Maybe as a spoiler, but while you guys are here, which house would you be in?
Oh, I'm a professor from River Park.
Okay. And the rest of the kids?
Can you tell them how you let the kids know about Harry Potter Club? Because that is really cool, like what you send out as their invitation. I think that's really cool.
Yes. So we have owls. They get their owl, but they are accepted into Harry Potter Club. We've done it in two different ways. We've got a whole plate of balloons of helium that we can put in their lockers. And they get a letter that like says, it's the same working as the Harry Potter number one. And we have a wax seal that we seal it closed with for them. So then, then they go home with balloons in their hands. We've also done just owls hanging in the classroom with their names on it and use the Harry Potter badge so that it looks authentic.
So Mr. Terrio, the sealer, was that the thing that I walked into one morning when you had wax melting over a candle? I'm like, what are you doing? And he explained it all out to me, so.
Sorry, I just thought that was like, Luke still has all of his invitations. So I thought it was.
It is cool to have like a little wax seal. And so when we go down, our first thing is to tell you about a few of our activities that we do in Harry Potter Club and then also about some of our projects that we've done in fifth grade.
And Mr. T, I told them you were ready for company.
Sure, always, yeah.
Let's go.
Still doing?
Hmm.
We actually did, uh, I'm in the next round. And we played hard every night and just chilled out. It's been so long since this was.
I see it every day.
Like, you have undivided, they're undivided attention, you know?
Oh, did they all leave?
I don't think.
Oh, darn.
What about Alan? Should I go find Alan?
He'll be back.
He'll be back.
He'll come back?
He's figuring out which house he belongs to.
Yeah. So worth the walk down? Unbelievable, huh?
Very nice. Yeah, it's so cool.
They really do. But they're just so engaged, all of them. But the kids' faces when they come out at the end of the night after they've had that. And then to hear the buzz the next morning when they're walking through and they're with a couple of their buddies and they're talking. And I know what they're talking about. Just the look on their faces, it's fun.
Yeah, that's awesome. I was hoping to be able to thank them.
Me too.
Thank them that way.
Keep watching. Yeah, okay. All right, well, that was great. Now, yeah, this is not as exciting, but let's do some policy review. And they're open.
As I put in my report, a few, so the, these are all your Title IX policies. They're what we had in 2020. And instead of 2024, they've gone back to a 2020. The highlights are really the difference in the definition of sexual harassment. In 2020, we're now 2025, is that, and it's tiki-taki. It has to be severe and pervasive that it effectively denies a person access to school versus 2024 where it denies or limits a person's ability. It's those kinds of changes you three, you'll see throughout it. In 2025, it refers to sexual harassment. In 2024, it was sex-based harassment and sex discrimination. Complaint resolutions, that's one of your bigger changes. And it's gone consistent with what it was before, which essentially talks about in 2025, you require a formal complaint. With 2024, you did not need a formal complaint. It just needed to be a belief that there was some kind of discrimination happening there. You still had to investigate. And then the whole gender identity is not specifically referenced in 2025. The new versions, it was included in 2024. Sex includes gender identity and sexual orientation. But in Maine, as you may or may not know under the Maine state law, it's still part of the Human Rights Act. And so it's protected that way. Not to mention with case law that you have. Those are your real changes here. Everything else is just a matter of how they capture. And I can answer any specific questions you have. These are exactly what we had four years ago.
I'm a HRF, waiting for her to speak up.
She's being recorded, she's going to be.
That's all right, no one watches anyway.
So these are because of the new executive orders?
It's because, not exactly. Title IX is always an interpretation. So this is what was sent out of that office. It wasn't because of the executive order. It's their interpretation of Title IX. Every time we have a change in leadership, that gets updated. The executive orders piggyback, if don't get me wrong.
This is just a comment versus a.
Okay.
No, and just from a, a reading it and understanding what the changes are, a redlined version would be great.
Yeah.
So you can see what actually got added or deleted.
Okay.
For future.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, good to see you.
I guess the other concern is that what the state is protecting right now may also not be what the state is protecting soon. So then.
So every time there's a legislative change, then you have to adjust to whatever that changes. And the policies would be rewritten depending on what exactly that is. But I think you also need to understand that before you get there, there is current case law, which is not what's in statutes, the interpretation of the statute. And so all of those things would play out through court, period. I mean, that's just how it's, no matter what happens, that's how it's going to play out.
So gender identity is still in the policy, though?
Yes, because of the Maine Human Rights.
Right, okay. So you're not just relying on that?
No, we're not just relying on case law, yeah, no.
Kind of a silly question, but are schools?
Kind of a silly question, but are schools allowed to have policies that are, like, if Maine law or something changes at some point that are different?
Above and beyond, you mean, or changed? So what you have to be careful about is your policy follows the law as long as you don't violate the law. You could talk about that, but that's not something we would write if we wanted to look at something in a different light or a different lens, we would have to go through legal to look at what those parameters are, because it gets really, and I mean really, ticky tacky.
Yeah, that's right.
The, the policies you have, I don't write and I don't change, that's, that's what they come from so that they're interpreted correctly. You can always ask for a specific policy, whether or not it's possible is really hard to speculatively answer until we see what that other statute looks like.
So when you say legal, does the school have like a legal department that looks at that?
So we have two different branches. Charlotte Bates out of, um, MSMA is the one in charge of policy, and that's, MSMA is the Maine School Vote Association and Maine Superintendent's Association combined.
Okay.
And we belong to that, and then they work very closely with Drummond Woodson, which is the legal firm for the majority of schools in Maine and New Hampshire.
Okay.
Who do all the different litigation and understand the ins and the outs.
Cool.
So they write them jointly, which is where these policies came from.
Who's the affirmative action officer, Steve?
Yeah, no, no, I'm the appeal.
Who is?
Rebecca Enman, the business manager.
Which is Title IX, 40.
Yes.
Second half, all the business?
So, that was all three of you?
Yes.
Uh, cost in?
Yep. So as we talk about every year when the audit is final, we always have to go back and realign the cost categories for anything that's overrun, because you can't overrun a cost category. I'm happy to explain any of these, it's not further details, but it's really moving money from your regular education line to the different cost categories that were overextended. So Byron, any specific questions? I have a motion, if somebody's willing to read it so it winds up, it'll just be easier.
So we're handing it to you. Thanks, well told. Uh, I make a motion to move the following amounts from the regular education cost category for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, to special education in the amount of fifty-four thousand, three fifteen seventy-four, to other instruction in the amount of eighteen thousand, one eleven sixty-four, to instructional support in the amount of forty-five thousand, one ninety-five seventy-five, to system and administration in the amount of six thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty cents, to transportation in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars, to facilities and maintenance in the amount of a hundred and eight thousand, three ninety-four fifteen.
For clarification purposes, where is that coming from again?
Regular education cost category.
Perfect, sorry.
I make a motion to accept.
Second?
All in favor?
Thank you.
Moving on to new business?
Yep, I have the Bill Warren back and signed, thank you.
And calendar?
Yep, you should have the calendar and the committee meeting dates included in your packets. It essentially follows this year with the shift of the dates for the calendar, that's it. Um, there are no other changes. As we talked about, every year there are six snow days in there so that we don't take, so that we don't take away days of summer, we give them back at the end of the year. Um, and then the, the meeting dates follow the same kind of guidelines that we had this year as well.
Calendar first read, or just approved?
Only read, yeah.
Yeah, I would motion to approve the calendar, both calendar and the school calendar.
Second? Okay, uh, all in favor? Okay, moving on to our reports. We have first our principals' report.
Yes.
Told you how to, you know, bring some pictures from the, uh,
Thank you.
Winter carnival, we had a vacation, we have all, I just took pictures. Thank you. Share with you. It's awesome, a beautiful day.
Did that, that Friday, right before we went on vacation, and the gym was filled with all kinds of games, and the little kids came down and...
This is one that they have to just kind of come whenever you want to come, sort of a schedule time?
Yes, they came from one to two or something, and, um, they had, they had so much fun. Uh, March, of course, is our long month, busy, but, um, we're preparing for our in-service day, you remember the regional in-service day that we have every year? In the morning, we have a keynote, Dr. Robert Brooks, tons about positive emotions and tons about resilience and whatnot, and in the afternoon, we're gonna do a couple of different things. We have a couple of different science programs that we're gonna be working on in the afternoon, and we're gonna have a, um, presentation just on some de-escalation. You know, we have our safety care that we have to get trained with, we have a group of us that are trained in safety care, but with that, safety care is also the whole precursor to it of de-escalating students before you get to that. So we thought it would be a good idea to present training on that for all staff, just to get through some of that. So we're doing that, you know that March is our month of drama, and by that I mean that so positively. It's my, I have so much fun watching these kids from three to five just flying around this building, doing whatever they want to do to get ready for this play, and then it just all comes together in the end. It is the most organized chaos I've ever seen in my life, and it is so much fun. So we'll be looking forward to that coming up. And, um, publicly thanking Mrs. Pelkey after a very long winter season with basketball and cheering, that, um, had a great season with that as well, so looking forward to March. Any questions for me?
Moving on to the assistant's report.
Uh, so we wrapped up our winter sports season, it was very fun, very successful. Our, um, boys B team won their championship, our boys A team won their B flight championship, and our girls A team won their championship, um, in very exciting game, actually. It was so much fun. And, um, our cheerleaders attended three different competitions. They went through a whole thing with new cheerleaders and sicknesses and injuries and changing our routines, um, and in our league competition, they came in third place, so I'm very proud of them. They really worked hard on that and proved that, um, smaller numbers doesn't matter when it comes to these kinds of competitions. Our jazz band performed at their district festival, and they have qualified for the state competition, which is at the end of March, so that's gonna be really exciting. And during their, um, district competition, we had, it's a mine, uh, we had some that earned a, um, earned perfect scores. We had, oh, two musicians that earned perfect scores, five musicians earned an outstanding musicianship certificate. Um, so they were recognized for their hard work as well. Um, and then really the things that we just saw down in fifth grade captures a lot of the rest of my letter. It wasn't just about first, uh, fifth grade, but just all the different visiting in different classrooms around the building, it's just so exciting. And I was just telling Nikki down in the fifth grade that I walked into a first grade classroom recently and learned three new facts about different animals that I didn't even know before. Um, so you're just always on the lookout for things that you can learn from students as well. Uh, it's fascinating, they have a lot to share, and there's a lot of engaging learning going on right now. So much fun. Any questions for me?
Well, just talking about the things going on, I meant to ask, how is it going with the, um, is it eighth grade that's making the videos, the news things, are they still doing that?
They didn't take that on this year, they did that last year, but this year, it, this is Ms. Johnson, every year it's something new, that she, she keeps life interesting for herself, for sure. So this year, and that's gonna be the presentation next month.
Oh, okay.
Her class, both E L A classes are working with third grade, and instead of just, I think they were just doing like a reading project or a writing project last year. This year, they've taken it on, and it's a whole Learning Buddy type situation. So they have their grade partner, so we're gonna learn more about that next year. Nope, she said it was a lot of fun, but it just got to be too time-consuming, and they couldn't get to some of the other stuff, so.
And one thing I noticed that's not on here is the talent show?
Oh, yes.
Oh, it's the talent show, yes, that is coming up.
And speaking of Ms. Johnson, we got an email the other day that she wants us to all dress in some kind of, what do you call those balloon uni, uh, costumes? So I know, I think this is gonna be something that we're gonna have to do.
I think it's like a masked singer experience with his dancing.
I, I don't know. I know, I only, I only half-read the email because I knew I was gonna have to do something, and I have to prepare. I'll have to men, you, do you have one?
I have a dinosaur one and a blue blob.
Oh, I wanna tag one so that I, okay, thank you.
I might be able to get access to a dinosaur.
Message me and remind me.
Okay, all right.
Or email me.
Yeah, 'cause I'm gonna get roped into it regardless, so I have to be prepared. I gotta mentally get myself prepared for this also.
We're gonna need to learn how to walk in.
I am sure.
Shuffle.
Yeah, it's a shuffle and sideways, everywhere. There's always something, there's always something going on here.
We do teach math and, yes, we do.
I think this is probably more important.
You want her to stay upright, we need practice.
So that's coming up soon, too. That's March fifteenth.
Yeah. Is that for all, right?
Hmm? It's for the whole show.
It's a talent show, yes.
Oh, that's cool.
I just learned our O R C cheerleaders, like our youngest cheerleaders are doing, uh, one of their, like, competition routines during the talent show. It's going to be adorable. It'll be here, and then it just...
Yes.
Okay, that's cool.
Are they feeding them food still?
Yes, I think we're doing a spaghetti dinner.
Is there a price to get in? Sorry, I have so many questions.
Yes, but it...
I don't know where they've been advertised, I'm not, I don't have a kid in the school anymore. I haven't seen advertised.
I'm trying to think if it was on...
It's in the newsletter.
It's in the newsletter, I know that's probably...
I might have made a Facebook post, but I can't remember now.
Yeah, I just, I've been...
Careful, we'll sign you up for a talent. You'll find out you're a performer.
Unless you want me to do your taxes.
Follow our Facebook page, you will see all the answers to your questions.
Okay, thank you.
It'll get posted again. I'll tag you in it.
Tag me too, please.
Okay, we'll move on.
That, that's a really tough act to... Golly, this is gonna be so boring compared to all of that. Um, Joe and I did a, um, training last month. It's part of a three-part series with about four hundred other people from five New England states, and it's all about, um, one-to-one parent educators, we call them ed techs here in our building. Um, and I put in a few bullets, and then I jotted a bunch of different notes that I wanted to share with you as well. Um, my primary reason for putting a one-to-one, um, additional support person with a student is for safety. But there are some drawbacks when you do that. For example, other people start to see that a student gets an ed tech, and they want an ed tech for their child, too. It's like this gold standard, everybody thinks it would be great. But what we have to always keep in mind is that students can become too dependent on that, and we need to train ourselves to know just how to stand back enough so that we're there monitoring and keeping them safe and keeping them learning without hovering and enabling and causing them to become too dependent on our adults. So it's important that we figure out how to train these people. Um, and another thing we heard during the training is that sometimes we're putting, um, some of our least skilled, um, people with the neediest or the most needy children. Um, so we've got to think about all those things as well. Um, and they said to us that we should always be hiring our parents or our ed techs with the intention that they should be working themselves out of a job within a certain period of time, because there's always gonna be more students that are gonna move in or come in or have those needs, and we should be able to kind of move them through, get those skills in place for a student, and then move on and help the next student. Um, I don't really think there's anything else I wanted to share about that. Um, and then the other part of my letter is that Child Development Services, we're taking that on, as you know, and Jill's gone and visited at least one program. I think she, she got waylaid by some snow or ice one day when she was gonna go. Um, and we're in really good company because we have a meeting tomorrow afternoon, and in addition to our district Brewer, Old Town, Hancock, Castine, Green Bush, Surrey, all of these, uh, schools in this region across the state, more people are joining this cohort as well. So I think it's probably a really good move, and I'd love for you to share more if you have ideas or thoughts that you want to share about what you've learned from your research.
Um, I'm excited to bring in as many of these students as we can. I think we have amazing staff and services that we can provide to them, and the earlier we get them in our building, the better off we're gonna be, and they will be in the long run. C D S has done a great job with what they've had, but they're not a school, and they're not a facility. So being able to meet their needs under one roof or three roofs at the different schools, I think is a huge, huge, um, step up from what these kiddos have been receiving. So I'm excited, I'm gonna go visit, I went to five seventy-two or Sedamoja, um, and saw their program, which is impressive. I'm headed to V Z next week to see what they've done in Cohort One, and we'll go from there.
Do you have a sense of how many students that will be?
Depending on what we bring in, so it's three, four, depends on the age and when they are kindergarten-ready, all of that. Um, we're looking six to eight.
How are we gonna staff it?
Very carefully.
Very carefully.
Yep.
We're using, is the plan to use existing staff, or are we gonna hire staff?
No, we'll probably, it depends on what the students' needs are. Like, when you're talking about speech therapists, we're probably not hiring another speech therapist if we're only talking about three or four kids. Um, if there are higher needs, then yes, we'll be talking about whether or not we need to add staff that's paid for by the state currently, which is one of the reasons they're doing the cohort, so that as we have this transition, we can get the structure in place, with the staffing in place that they need. Um, but part of what the experience has been is that once you open that door, you start to get more people, I think because they know where the school is as opposed to C D S. And so that may grow as we go, but that's why we're gonna start slow and steady to get there.
So they have a teacher?
Depends on whether or not we have them integrated in the pre-K or, you know, 'cause we have that currently. We have students that we are subcontacted through C D S to provide services to who are enrolled in our pre-K program, and so they can come out for that and go back.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that one, but did you say with state funded?
Yes, currently, currently.
So, um, when, and this is meant to come out in, you said three years after the last meeting, was it? Like, within a certain time?
So we have to take it over with, within three years, we're taking it over a year early. With Cohort Two, right, a year early, yeah.
Does the state funding, um, like, kick in as soon as you take it over? Is it like a process you have to apply for, or?
They've already applied and been accepted, so it'll automatically kick in once we start submitting it.
In the defense, the only way to go.
Do you have any questions, please, other than those?
Do we have a lot of kids that have one, on one instruction right now?
I thought you might ask that. That's okay.
Was it in the one, or I'm so sorry, I read it earlier.
We have about five right now, and primarily it's in the kindergarten and first grade. Those are the children that because of their dysregulation tend to do that flight response, and we are so worried that they're gonna get out of our building, and so that's primarily why we have one-to-ones with those students.
Okay, that makes sense.
Good question.
Thank you so much. Oh, and then we have our John Mast report.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, no, sorry, first name.
You're all good. I'll, and I talk fast, so we'll go real fast. Um, so in your, in your package, you'll see your report from John Mast, and if I were to pick a couple bullet points from each section, I try to be extremely thorough and detailed, but, um, students will be picking new classes in March. Um, they're starting to build communications with University of Maine and Huson, so kind of like a cohort, that's my word, not theirs, but, um, and they're looking at a potential partnership with Nescom at one of the buildings that they own on French Street. Uh, robotics team won one of their tournaments, uh, and another one got an excellence award. They're maybe potentially looking to go to Dallas. Um, they have their Chicago team... They have their Chicago teen edition, which is gonna be on March 7th and 8th, the play at the school. National Honor Society. Oh, there's a hockey game tomorrow night for the Northern Championship. And one of the alums from CDS actually is gonna be attending goal. They're 18, one and one. It's the best record that they've ever had, which is pretty impressive. They're gonna play the other one tomorrow, I think at six or 6:30. Admissions, they did their tours, obviously. Came here. They were a big highlight of the Blue Hill Consolidated School. Their step-up day had about 50 non-sending students, which is on average, which is what they've done before. On the, it was funny because when we got the agenda, there were about 35 applications. And at the time, which was only, I don't know, about 14 days ahead of the deadline. So in about 14 days, they got an immense amount of applications that were sent. And so they're, they're at 120 at the time of the meeting. And international students is on par. They're expected, they take more international students in March than they do a tour. They're headed to China to do some recruitment and stuff, so. There was a dean of students had resigned. The chemistry teacher, who was also a house parent, is no longer with the school. They filled the chemistry role. The house parent role is being rotated amongst the staff there, so they're not overly concerned with that. They've hired for a couple of positions. They're looking for a long-term sub for exercise science. Finances are in good order. They do have a little bit of a deficit in the development side of things, but nothing that they're overly concerned about. They've got a golf tournament coming up. The dates are right in their package. And that's pretty much it for me. And I welcome any questions from what I remember. It was only a couple of weeks ago, so.
What is?
Cam.
Oh, I wonder, I didn't know he was goalie.
He, he saved 26 goals in two games as a freshman.
What's a house parent?
So they have the international students. They have the houses that are up on State Street, like the, I'm sorry, on Broadway. And then they have house parents that stay with the international students.
Oh, okay.
I don't know the total number. I get a sense it's like a half dozen or so.
So they're like, other teachers are like taking turns staying with the kids?
Yeah, yeah.
So usually at the beginning of the year, one of the teachers commits to being the house parent.
And they stay there every night?
Yeah.
For like how long?
A little year, yeah.
They live there.
It's their house. It's free lodging.
Free lodging, free meals, free with their plus their income.
Yeah.
I mean, good for them.
Yeah.
I don't know, last year's house care, every time he came to school, he looked like a zombie.
Yeah.
That's super welcoming group. I was grateful to be there. It was good.
Is Dr. Real still there? He was a house parent.
He's, he's kind of there. When I was there with orientation, like when I went to see and he was in the gym working out.
It doesn't surprise you.
I think he's got another job.
He went back to
Yeah.
MD wasn't enough. He's going back to the street to do.
Yeah. Okay, sorry. Now we can get to yours. See, I just saved the
Oh, I submitted it. I submitted it. We've covered it.
There's nothing else.
No, we've covered except the personnel, which we'll get to next.
Okay. All the reports. So there's no nominations?
Nope. The appointment's just for information. Francine Nylan, one-to-one nurse. If you remember last time, we had the resignation of the one-to-one nurse, so that's a replacement.
That was sweet.
Mary Ellen and Jill, are that good?
Okay, looks like we don't have anything else on the agenda. Any other questions or comments from the public?
There's a question, Mary Ellen and Jill. You mentioned if you have special needs students. You wouldn't necessarily welcome to hire, for example, speech therapists. How, I missed, you said, how do you deal with such a situation when you have several students who make some of you consulting sort of basis?
So you, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, right now, we have students in pre-K that are getting speech therapy or occupational therapy and our current providers are meeting their needs. But you meant more about instructionally?
Well, we just already have people that are doing that here, so they would just see those kids and
Like the resources we have.
The real shift is we're now gonna be the ones responsible for it. And right now, an organization outside of the school, Child Development Services, is responsible for the student until they get to five. The law changed on that, so schools are gonna start picking up the three to five section of that. So this is that transition period, but they never had enough providers anyway. So we've been providing it, well, since I was a director, for at least 10 years, we were the ones providing it because otherwise the kid did not get the services they needed. So in the pre-K program.
Age is, age is three, five.
We actually We're providing it here.
Right.
In the community.
One of our pre-K students is a student that has a one-to-one adult with them. That one is actually more for like personal care needs and that is needed. Child Development Services is reimbursing us for the portion of that person's salary right now. But next year, we would be responsible for paying that. They are gonna give us some, some reimbursement, yes. But we employ that person and then we can utilize them in other places in the building too, if that child is ill or something.
Close with this thing. Some, I may have told you this before, in memory of dollars, that someone gave me one time in respect to a select one. You guys had much more serious, you know, which counts for this, and I told them more great information, this, so we just agree.
Right.
Clearly you guys clearly disagree with that. And that Eric Law.
That's amazing.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing else, we can put your name in our meeting until next month.
Thank you.